And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And one C is the agenda, any items to add to the agenda? We'll move forward with the agenda as published. Next item is recognition of visitors in the public forum, I think Julia was here and Skyler not here yet, right? Okay, you want to step up to the podium? Again, up to five minutes and please no personal attacks.
Hi, I'm Julia. Okay, there we go. It says it's on now. Okay. Hi there, I'm Julia and my friend Skylar who is supposed to be here is a transgender student who just moved here recently to Becker. And a month ago, there was a presentation made about transgender students. And there were a lot of remarks about how they didn't know any transgender students in the neighborhood. Therefore, we would like to introduce ourselves. The group you're about to meet compiles of students who are completely out, students who are still in the process of coming out, and those who have to hide ourselves because of the unfair treatment directed towards transgender students in Becker. I'm student A. I don't feel safe at my school. Words said to me consist of slurs, misgendering terms, and blatant insults on my identity and character regarding my identity. I'm student B. I've been misgendered and deadnamed by many people, including specific teachers. When this happens to me, there is little to no defense. I feel singled out and I feel like I have nobody to help me in the school system. I'm student C. I live in an unaccepting community. Unacceptance comes in many forms, but having a group present misinformation by individuals with no credentials on things that do not involve board action speaks volumes about the unacceptance in this community and in the school. It highlights my peers and myself in this community and it sheds a dim light on us, making us feel unsafe. I'm student D and I believe teachers need to have intensive training on how to provide a safe environment to every student in their classroom. In most cases, they might not know how to do that. They need help from people who actually have credentials in this matter. We asked for this well over a year ago and it has not happened yet. I'm student E and we want to know if your new knowledge outweighs the harm that the harm it dealt to the children and to the children of the school and their parents. These statements show that toxic culture has been built in Becker. The only way for LGBTQ plus students to have a safe and healthy environment is for the board and faculty to stand by these students as they should for all students. Please remember that children should not be put in the middle of adult issues, meaning we need to make Becker a place for acceptance and caring for others is the standard. LGBTQ plus students need vocal support and action. Unless this is taken, it is putting students at risk for bullying, harassment, mental health problems, and many more issues. Lastly, please remember people from the LGBTQ plus community are our neighbors, our teammates, classmates, coworkers, and humans, no matter what their gender or sexual orientation is.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I am Heidi Nissler. I am the Director of Special Education for the Sherburne and Northern Wright Special Education Cooperative, which includes Becker schools. And I'm really excited to talk with you tonight about the special ed services that are provided here in Becker and then some of the unique programs and services that are offered through the co-op that Becker is a part of. So just a few points that I'm going to cover tonight is a little bit about who is the Sherburne and Northern Wright Special Ed Cooperative? The second is what we do, what services and supports do we offer to students, families, and staff here in Becker? A little bit of an overview about funding and then just some next steps with where we're going as an organization within the co-op to make sure we are meeting the needs of students, families, and staff here in Becker. Us a little bit about who we are. The co-op is actually a separate school district recognized by the Minnesota Department of Education. The co-op is School District 1690-52, like Becker is District 726. The co-op also is recognized as a separate school district and that's because we offer some specialized programming for students that are enrolled as co-op students. There are three districts within the co-op as of July 1st last year. So the districts that we serve are Becker, Big Lake, and Monticello. Previously, there had been a fourth school district, St. Michael Albertville, and I came to speak to the board last spring, I think almost about a year ago, because with STMA withdrawing and becoming independent, the co-op was transitioning to a co-op that had three-member districts. And we've done a lot of work over the last year and will continue to look towards the future. So just some key numbers that I thought were pretty interesting. When you combine all of the students enrolled in our three districts, we serve almost 10,000 students. And we have over 1,800 students who receive special education services. Within our three districts, that's about 17% of the students enrolled in our districts receive special education services, which is a little bit higher than the state average. But I do believe part of that is the reputation that our districts have within this region. We do receive, especially for our co-op programs that are physically located in Monticello, we do have families choose to open enroll to our districts because of the strong programming that we have in place. Some key numbers here in Becker. Becker has around 2,800 students and almost 500 students receive special education services. Most of those students receive special ed services right here in Becker from early childhood up through high school. And that's about a little over 17% of students in Becker. So this is again, a little bit higher than the state average. One area that we have noticed for Becker is the early childhood staff into primary are very good at recognizing possible delays for students. And so we identify students early here in Becker to make sure that they are getting those services at an early age, whereas sometimes students might not, in other districts, might not start receiving those services till later. So that's one difference that we've noticed in Becker is we're identifying students early, which is something that we want to see. We want to make sure our students are getting services as early as possible. And just a little bit of a reminder, why be part of a co-op? We've done a lot of work over the last two years, really trying to fine tune what is it that the co-op offers? Like, one of the biggest advantages to a school district is the financial savings that can come through being part of a cooperative. There are certain services and programmings that every district has to offer, whether you are a district that serves 500 students or 30,000 students. And by being a cooperative, we are able to pool resources between our three school districts. So you are getting just enough service and just the right amount of programming for those highly specialized programming that would be more expensive if you were not part of a co-op. So we make sure that you receive all of the services that you need and we offer some high-level professional development opportunities to staff and administrators throughout the year. One thing that we're proud of is we are continuing to think outside the box and really be responsive to what each of our districts need. And so we are starting to explore some services outside of special education as well. So governance is an important consideration within our cooperative organization. We have two bodies that help us with the governance in the co-op. The first one is the Superintendent Advisory Council, which is the superintendents from each of our three districts. So Superintendent Schmidt represents Becker on that committee. And then we also have the governing board and Chair Swanson is now the representative from Becker Public Schools. He was able to be at a meeting last week and try to get him caught up as quickly as possible. And the governing board is the body that votes on the budget, the vote on the staffing. So similar to how you operate as the school board for Becker, the governing board fulfills some of those same responsibilities for the co-op. And a little bit about what we do. This is kind of the fun stuff. This is where we get to work with kids. A majority of what we do is oversee and provide all of the special education services. So even the special ed services that are provided here in Becker, the co-op helps provide leadership and training for the special education staff here. We support with all instruction. We assist with the MTSS systems that Becker has in place. We have co-op school psychologists who work very closely with MTSS. We also help complete evaluations and IEPs for students. And then we also work with finance. I work closely with Kevin behind the scenes, making sure that the budgets are all in line and also pretty active legislatively with advocacy for our districts. And then we work with parents to resolve any disputes that we may have. Most of what I do seems to be grounded either in finance or legal issues. And so the federal government sets the floor for special education services. They'll create the rule, the big law is the Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act that kind of set the stage for special education. And then the state also creates statute. One trend that we have seen is that Minnesota goes in some areas very far above and beyond what is required per the federal level, including some areas that seem to be impacting some of the choices that parents may have for the education of their child. So those are some of the areas that I try to connect with our legislators to advocate for. And then in special education, there's always a lot of case law that we are trying to stay up to date about. Every couple of years, there seems to be a new case that goes to either the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals or the US Supreme Court. And one of the most important things I feel like I do to support Becker is make sure that I am up to date with all the legal happenings to ensure that looking out for the rights of our students and families, but also for the district as well. So some services that we offer. All of the special ed administration is through the co-op. We also have school psychologists who are really tightly entrenched here in Becker schools. They are onsite every day. We also provide a lot of the special ed services. So students who may be deaf or hard of hearing will have an audiologist or a DHH teacher. We have ASL interpreters. We have occupational therapists, physical therapists. A lot of those specialized services are through the co-op. One thing that's really neat that I think a lot of families might not realize exists is there are services for children starting as young as days old. From birth through kindergarten, families are eligible to receive services if their child has a developmental delay and meets a certain threshold. And so from ages birth to two, we have a program, our early intervention program that has home visitors. So there are school staff that will go into homes with families to help them learn strategies and skills to support the development of their young child. And I think that's often a service that families don't know exists and it is free. So that's something that we're trying to get the word out to, especially as we continue to recover from the pandemic and continue to move forward. We want to make sure that families know what resources are available to them. We also have other specialized programming for students who need a smaller setting or a more intensive program than could necessarily be offered within a school building here. We have some students who need a program that is only two or three students in a really specially designed space and that is where they're able to make the most progress and we are proud to offer some of those programs for students who need that. We have several students who have been attending those intensive programs in Becker and it's exciting to see them acquire skills to be successful in school and then be able to transition back. And we've had several students transition back to Becker this year. And it's really neat to see them gain so many skills where now they are successful in this type of setting. And we also offer special ed programming for students. After their senior year of high school, some students are eligible for services until they're 21. And so again, just trying to make sure that from birth through 21, we offer a full continuum of services for students with disabilities here in Becker. Special education funding, I'm sure that Kevin knows a lot about special education funding and I'm sure at times you've heard different things. Because it's a separate school district, there is some different funding pieces with the co-op. And there's also special education funding that comes directly to Becker as well. Some of the high-level funding pieces that we look at are federal grants. All public school districts receive federal funds that flow to the co-op, but then we flow them back to Becker schools and we work with Kevin and Jeremy to determine how we're going to use those to support our students with disabilities. We also have our state special education aid, which is a complex system and the funding we receive does not cover the full cost of what it costs to provide special ed services. And then similar to Becker, the co-op also receives compensatory aid. And then there's a few other types of aid that we receive as well that are specific to programming for students with disabilities. It's like I said, so here in Becker, the special ed funding that you would receive that we communicate very closely with your business manager about are the federal funds that flow in that the co-op will flow many of that directly back to Becker schools for you to use with your staff, for your students. Becker also receives state special education aid. And like I mentioned, there is a cross subsidy. So cross subsidy is the difference between what it costs to provide special education services and the actual revenue that a district receives. And this gap continues to get larger and larger and larger across the state. And it is one of my top priorities when I meet with legislators and other elective officials as well is to advocate for additional funding to target that cross subsidy. Because anything that isn't covered by special education aid has to come from the general fund, which is not what we like to see. And even last week, I had conversations with Chair Swanson about continuing to advocate for that. And then Becker schools also receive some third-party billing revenue, which is for health-related services. We never build private health insurance, but the state does require us to bill medical assistance if that's what a student has. It doesn't, it never impacts a student's eligibility or maximum aid that they would ever receive for MA. And then where we're going, as we have transitioned to a co-op with three-member districts, we have a new logo that is official as of last week when we had our governing board meeting. The waves have the colors of our three-member districts and the river and the waves represent the river that ties our three districts together. And then we are just really focusing on collaboration between our three districts, really trying to identify what are our needs and how can we work together to make sure that we're meeting those needs. One thing that we are offering is a grant writer. The co-op is going to have a part-time grant writer to help each of our three districts write grants. And this is not specific to special education, but we are looking to try to maximize any revenue that we can for each of our three districts. So as soon as this person's on board, we are going to be working with your district leaders to identify any grant opportunities and submit grants on your behalf. And then starting this summer and early fall, we're going to be doing some strategic planning as a co-op. So looking at special education, but then also broader and just what can we help support for student achievement? Are there other ways that we can help our organizations operate more efficiently? And then how can we be supporting safe and welcoming environments for all students and all of our staff? And then, so then the conclusion is my contact information, but just a little bit of an overview.
Heidi, can you just tell us again, how many staff members are in that special ed district?
Yeah, so in the co-op itself, I have about 90 certified staff who are some of the service providers, but then also teachers in those specialized programs. And we have about, I'm trying to think of something, I believe it's about 60 to 70 non-licensed staff, which are either paraprofessionals, ASL interpreters. We have several students who are blind, so we have somebody who specializes in Braille. And so altogether, we have over 150 staff members just for the co-op itself.
And I'll have a committee report on the special ed co-op as well, so just to add some more of those pieces, but I wanted you guys to understand. So you're officed in Monticello?
Yep, yep. I'm officed in Monticello. Across the three districts, there are 13 schools. I try to get out and about as much as I can, but my main office is in Monticello attached to their district office.
Other questions from board members? You're thinking, Ryan.
I guess my only comment, being a numbers guy, is the funding for special ed and how it flows and all that. I don't even have my head around it, so to even try and come up with a question to just like, I know we have special ed pairs here, how that correlates to, is that part of the co-op? Is that part of Becker schools? How do we tie that all together? How do we make sure that we are getting all of our dollars accounted for? We're not overspending, we're not underspending. Every kid gets their, what they're supposed to get, so on and so forth, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, that's a really good question. So every year, kind of following the same budgeting and planning cycle that you have here in Becker, the co-op helps lead that for our co-op programs, but then also for special ed services in each of our districts. And so I have a special education coordinator, her name is Steph. She works full-time here in Becker. And so she is here every day. Her office is in the district office just next door here. And so what we do is we look at every building, every student. We know the names of all of the students here in Becker. We know what services they receive. And so we're always projecting and double-checking. You know, making sure that we have the teachers, the speech pathologists, the paraprofessionals. And almost all of the staff that work here in Becker within special education are employees of Becker. The only exception where services would be provided from the co-op are Steph, who's the special education coordinator, and some of those really specialized related services. The occupational therapist, the teacher for students who are deaf and hard of hearing, physical therapist, just because Becker, due to its size, it would be inefficient for you to have one of each of those people yourself within the district. And so what we do is every year and throughout the year, about every quarter, every trimester, we are checking to see how many students need each of these services from the co-op. And if the number of students who need that service in Becker goes up, I reallocate and shift my co-op staff to provide more service here in Becker. Or if a service, or if, for example, there was a couple students who received a lot of that related service that moved. And so if there's a need that goes down, I reallocate that so Becker is not paying for services that they don't need. Does that kind of hit at what you were?
I think so, yeah. And in the end, as we go through the year, you know, we fund a certain portion. If there's monies remaining left over, that comes back to us as well. So there is monies kind of flowing back and forth to make sure that each of the three districts are paying their fair share. Right?
Yes, yep. We look very carefully at our proposed budget and then we also have a revised budget. But then we also have that final budget after the school year has closed, where we're really making sure that the costs line up with the actual services that Becker had received. And I think Superintendent Schmidt had said it best, if it was a year or two ago, being part of a co-op is kind of like your insurance policy, that if a student with high needs or who has a lot of service moves into your district, if a district is not part of a co-op, they may have to hire several staff to work directly with that student. Whereas by being part of a co-op, the co-op has all of these services available and we can just shift. Where instead of hiring two or three staff, it may be just parts of different staff.
And I want to just mention just a little bit of my report because I know adding staff members is one of the pieces. Right now, you don't currently have a nurse associated with the special ed program, so that's one of the big adds for this next year.
Yeah, yeah. One thing that I had requested within my proposed budget for next year was adding a nurse for our co-op programs. And our co-op programs serve students from Becker, Big Lake, and Monticello. And I have, even just in one of my elementary programs, I have five students whose medical needs are so high that they are so medically fragile that I have five students that each need a one-on-one nurse. And, but I didn't have a school nurse to help oversee and provide oversight to the nurses who were providing that direct care and just really needing to make sure that we have all of the health plans and everything in place to make sure that all students are safe at school. And that staff, whether it's an employee of Becker or of the co-op, or if it's a contracted staff member, that we make sure that they have the training and the supervision that they need.
Anything else? Thanks, Heidi.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight.
All right, we're into reports. 2A is the student report. And so first of all, I want to thank you guys for being up here at the table. We will have this practice, you know, going on for the rest of the year to make sure that you're here at the table. What that means is you have a voice in the things that we're doing. Now, you're not a technically voted member. You're like the superintendent where you have voice but no vote. But you guys have a voice in what we're doing. So, you know, as we work through the issues, talk through the issues, want to make sure that you have the opportunity to contribute. So being up here is an important thing.
Right, thank you, Ms. Swanson. So starting off, just things that have gone on since our last meeting. The juniors took their ACTs April 19th. Bad auditions by bad actors held four performances this past weekend. The robotics team competed in the world championship April 19th to the 22nd. Spring fling has been under planning for a few weeks now. Boys and girls rugby season just began with their first games. The girls tied with their first game and their most recent one, they won against Hopkins 17 to 0, which was their first win. The boys recently won in their last game as well. Druckenfield has begun their season with some meats being canceled and some being postponed because of the weather, unfortunately. And then tonight, there is a youth night's boys lacrosse game. So the kids will be able to go out on the field and have some fun during halftime.
All right, and then things we have happening this month in school is kind of a lot just because it's the last full month of school. On May 6th, we have a half online day and then the next day is prom for the juniors and seniors and then some sophomores. And then on May 16th, we have a band concert. And on May 18th is the scholarship night. And then on May 20th, student council is hosting the spring fling that we will have for the students. It'll be like a half-day and then the rest of the day after classes, we'll have fun activities for them to do and like fun snacks. Just something fun for the end of the year. And then May 23rd is the choir show. The last day for the seniors is the 26th and then the day after is graduation, which will be held at 7:00. And then there is no school on May 30th because I think that's Memorial Day. And then the last day of school for everybody else is June 3rd. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report?
Graduation, as was noted, is May 27th at 7:00 PM. And then on the football field again this year. Hopefully the weather will cooperate with us. And if you'd like to participate as a board member, just let Angel know by May 13th and then be prepared to be there by 6:30. Still waiting more news from the state legislature. The end of the session is May 21st. It's going to, there's going to be quite a bit of movement and things taking place. There were a number of things last week that started moving again after the Easter break. And I think going forward for the next two to three weeks, it's going to be pretty active at the Capitol. I've been in contact with Representative Mecklen on some bills and things and you know, again, it's going to be pretty active and we'll continue to keep everyone updated with those types of things. The Becker Summer Academy will take place during two sessions. The first session is seven days from June 7th to June 16th. And August 8th is the second session starts to the 18th. It's eight days for the second session. They run Monday through Thursday. The exception is June 6th because that's already a staff workday on that date, so we won't have students here on that time. So we've been able to utilize some of the federal funding from grants to to provide essentially a normal school day for the students who qualify for our Becker Summer Academy. So we'll have transportation, we'll have nurses, secretaries. There's a number of staff. It's going to, I mean, they're not going to notice a difference other than there's going to be less kids in the building. During that time, teachers, support staff, the principals will be there as well. And so Um, during that time, teachers, support staff, the principals will be there as well, and so uh, for both of those sessions, and we'll use federal monies to to help support that, because we haven't done that previously. Last summer, we did a little bit, um, but this will be more expensive this time, and we also just received another five thousand dollar grant from from Liberty Liberty Paper. Um, we're gonna give students who attend Becker Summer Academy, we're gonna get a a book or some books to to leave, leave the two-week session with, so they'll be able to utilize that as well. Uh, building project update. Uh, the administration, along with ICS and MLA, have had multiple meetings in the last month about safety and security and the secure entrance entrances. ICS has also been present at some township meetings and city meetings, um, discussing water and sewer auctions for the new transportation facility on the site that's off off school property here, uh, or off the main campus here. And uh, so they're they're continuing to work on that with with the city and and townships. And then we have staff appreciation this week.
Jeremy, I'm sorry, before you before you leave that item, I think, because I was at the township meeting that they were at, and one of the issues is that land that we own outside of town is not part of the city. And so to do sewer and water there is a little bit, it can be more expensive, because it's part of the township. And so I I believe that the city township are working out that there are a possible annexation of that property into the city uh, to allow us to to get that sewer and water, you know, at a at a more reasonable cost. And so there are some things that still have to happen there, but I wanted the board to be aware of that potential that that they might need to work through an annexation of that land, so.
Uh, we talked about that at our last meeting. They have the plans drawn up, and they had figured to go ahead with wells and and septic. If this, if they don't, if they can't get the city sewer water hookup, so this is kind of a, they have the plan in place, and they thought, well, we're gonna go meet with the city and see if we can do this, um, it'd be great, uh, depending on the price of what the cost would be to hook up the city sewer water versus the well and septic out there as it is. So, not not a surprise, it's just they're trying to work another angle and see if they can get that through.
Yeah.
Anything else on? And and, because I know you guys aren't having a separate report, right?
Uh, then, uh, this week is, uh, staff appreciation week. We celebrate here at Becker Schools, um, from May second to the sixth. Tomorrow will be a bagel and cream cheese for all staff, sponsored by the cabinet. Uh, PTSA is doing movie star theme appreciation this week as well, and then we have social media posts for each group during the week, for people to to view and share and comment on as well. Any other questions on on anything?
Questions, the superintendent's report? Committee reports? I have a few of them. The first one, I I want to give a a report as the board chair. During our special meeting on on April twentieth, we had kind of a brief discussion and some back and forth on the on the things around the March fourteenth meeting, and some of the lessons learned. I, we we've had this, you know, had discussion or update from the superintendent, and again, while we intend to provide fully transparent information and some additional items that we'll be going through with regard to things like security and those types of things, we can't go into additional details at this point. First of all, I want to have a full board before we go through all those things. There's some ongoing investigations and potential disciplinary actions. And so if you have any questions, uh, concerns, additional information to provide, you can either contact myself or the the superintendent, and we will provide then that that back out to the board as, uh, information. That's just, uh, the piece from the the school board chair piece and and the discussion about, um, March fourteenth. There there will be some additional discussions and and meetings, uh, there are times during our June, June, July, and ongoing meetings to discuss some of those things. The, with regard to the uh, board policies committee that was created, and Ryan and Tony, you guys were both appointed that, that is a a committee that is new for our district. And so for that, um, be, as the two board members appointed, you are free to add people to that policies committee, and the idea is that, um, there are several policies and the student handbook, the staff handbook, those types of things that need to be reviewed and updated. And so that's why we created that separate committee to do that. And, uh, Tony and Ryan, you guys are empowered to get your committee together, um, with the appropriate inputs from community students and and stuff like that. So you guys, uh, take, uh, take care of that committee. From the curriculum committee, next month is is, we're gonna have several items that'll have to come for approval. Um, there's three presentations coming to the June curriculum committee for likely presentation for approval at our June meeting in elementary science. Correct me if I'm wrong, in the elementary science, FIAED, and sixth grade math are the the three key items that need to come because of jumbling of the curriculum, of moving it from individual grade levels, it's no longer in a specific band, but each grade level has some specific requirements. And so we ha- will likely have to purchase some additional curriculum in order to meet those requirements and try to figure out how it's all gonna fit together. We're hoping that everything comes, kind of comes together in in that piece, and again, ongoing meetings. And thanks to the staff that's putting all of that information together for the curriculum committee, so it can come come before the board. Also, I want to add that there's, uh, some new high school courses starting, uh, this next year. Specific courses in theater tech, um, so that's the, like, running the booth and lighting and all of that kind of stuff, helping with scenes, all of that, that technical work that has to be done in the in the theater area. Um, that that course is starting, there's a mechanical design and fabrication. Uh, so, um, design and development of, uh, products for potential marketing, that kind of stuff. And then, um, as we all, we had the the presentation for the consumer sciences, um, piece on on food courses, so um, there's three, the the renaming of those courses to to align with the information that's being presented in those. I don't remember the name, so I'm sorry, but there's three introduction to. Yeah, but it could actually lead into the kind of the culinary arts, actually preparing food for catering restaurants, that kind of stuff is is a big piece of that. Again, um, and then, uh, ninth grade science is, again, kind of jumbling around and transition for the reorganization of science to meet the Minnesota standards um, because of the earth science requirements that are moving from eleventh grade to ninth grade. And so some reorganization happening in that earth science area, and particularly ninth grade science. Okay? Any questions on curriculum?
So just a curiosity question, do we offer a personal finance course?
Yes.
We do? Okay. I was just curious.
Yeah. They can answer.
Yeah.
That's good. Any other questions? Tax prep, you're gonna get some, some new employees for Ryan.
There you go.
Great. Other questions on curriculum? Okay, and then, um, as Heidi presented, as special ed co-op, I was there. Um, and so we approved the logo, um, was one of the pieces. We approved the budget, um, going forward. And then we also passed the funding resolution to eliminate that cross-subsidy of the unfunded mandates. The same resolution that we passed this last year, we passed at the special board, uh, or special education co-op board uh, as well to, and so that that, um, that resolution also goes to the legislature, so they understand that you know, it's nice to have mandates of things that we want that that need to be done, but those need to be funded by the state and federal government. Okay? Did I miss anything, Heidi? Heidi, did I miss anything? No? Any questions on the special ed co-op? Again, I was, I'm acting as the clerk for that, that co-op. Okay, any other committee reports?
There was a finance committee meeting last week, and last week, Thursday, Thursday, we had to move it, and, um, talking about the revised budget and upcoming budget, which I will let Kevin go into more detail later in the agenda, so we're not duplicating that.
Okay, any other committee reports? Okay, uh, moving on to item two D, which is a summary of the closed sessions. Per Minnesota statute, we have to come back at the next regular board meeting and summarize the closed sessions. The first part of the closed session was on the security briefing, um, and the discussion with our school liaison officer and the Sherburne County Sheriff on the security and infrastructure of our buildings. Um, again, we don't go into the detail, but, um, there are several, several improvements that were identified and several parts of procedures that, um, will be adopted going forward, so that we understand what the legal requirements are as far as involving the law enforcement in either either within the buildings and and the investigations that they do, um, including, uh, board meetings and and so forth and so on. So that was the the gist of the discussion for security, and and we also talked specifically about this this particular room and and the the available spaces within our um, buildings to to hold large assemblies. Um, the second item that was discussed in the closed board meeting was, um, evaluation and review of the performance of the superintendent. Um, and, uh, several items of feedback were given to the superintendent and requested a a written plan from him uh, that's coming back to this, the school board. Um, I believe he's at least started working on on those pieces and, uh, and continued ongoing effort from the superintendent for those improvements. Did I miss anything? With two closed board meetings? Okay, uh, we're on to item three, which is the consent agenda. Looking for a motion?
I moved to accept the consent agenda, removing which one is it, uh, three F, please?
Okay, so consent agenda has been moved.
A second.
Seconded by Aaron. Item three F is removed for a separate discussion. Okay, any other items that the board wishes to discuss? Okay, you can, the consent agenda has been moved and seconded, with the exception of item three F. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item three F?
Uh, I just was hoping that, um, Jeremy could give more of an overview of the communication plan itself, it goals, um, what we're trying to accomplish with this communication plan.
Sure, uh, yeah, just looking at the, uh, communication plan, we were able to bring that to the cabinet and the exec committee. Uh, myself and Michelle Peacock worked on that, brought it to the last board meeting, um, to get some feedback on that. I guess the the goal of it is to continue to communicate with our with our stakeholders, um, but it includes both internal and external communications. If you look at the belief statements that are in there, uh, community members should understand the changing landscape of education to engage with, participate in, and support the educational system. Uh, staff member, staff members adapt, should adaptable to learn new information and skills to facilitate learning with students, and are prepared to thrive in an ever-changing world. Creating self-directed learners, self-disciplined and autonomous workers, uh, while being creative thinkers with a drive for innovation. And then, uh, allowing parents to collaborate and understand the the new realities of today's learning environment to model and teach self-directed behavior, lifelong learning, uh, in an environment that fosters these expectations, and so those are the beliefs of of the plan. Uh, the the plan does a number of different things. One of the things it does, um, and if you look toward the end of the plan, is creates an opportunity for us to uh, help brand the school, um, utilizing the same colors, the same bulldog logos and and things like that. Uh, if you've noticed in the last year or two, we've we've increased the number of bulldogs and, um, things that are around our district and tried to, I think at one point when we started this process, uh, a couple of years ago, we had like forty or fifty different types of bulldogs that were within our building, our buildings. And so we wanted to kind of get get that streamlined and get it to one, so when we have, when your people see the bulldog and you see Becker uh, with the bulldog emblem, that helps, um, kind of just draw draw people to our community and and our school district. Uh, and then the other piece of the plan is making sure that that we're continuing to communicate with with specific audiences and what types of communications will be um, expected and and take place, uh, throughout, throughout our district and throughout the school year. Uh, and that's, that's, more toward the beginning, there's target audiences, uh, and and things like that, that are on there, and both internal, external, what types of, um, media we're gonna use to communicate that, that, those types of things. And so, so that is all listed in there. One of the things that that I did get feedback on with the communication plan was just making sure that people had an opportunity to to have an outlet if if they needed to to, just were communicated with, to, uh, maybe make a comment to the public or to the media, um, and some people aren't comfortable doing that, so, uh, one of the phrases we added in in the plan was uh, to ensure compliance with data privacy laws and other legal considerations. Employees may not make statements to the media, individuals, or entities outside the district relating to student or personnel matters. Uh, and then we created a, uh, kind of a chain of command with that, where inquiries regarding such matters must be directed to the directors and building administration, and then the director of community ed and superintendent will oversee this communication, and may also be used as a resource on specific inquiries, and so part of the reason that language was added in was to help protect our our staff, um, from feeling like they have to make comments um, to media when they're inquired with, um, and and it it gives them an opportunity to kind of go out and ask for help from myself or the director of community ed, or their building administrator, um, or director. So that is in there as well. Is that?
Yeah, I guess my follow-up question question would be, I see that there, we've got goals listed. Is there measurables that you have started to develop to know whether or not our communication plan is working, and yes or no, if no, who are the, who are the people involved that are gonna help tweak the plan to make sure that we're meeting our goals?
Yeah, we don't have any specific number goals or anything like that that are that are in the plan. Um, but we wanted to kind of just get an opportunity to say, here's where you can expect communication from the school district, how often you can expect this communication, uh, where it's coming from and who it's going to. Uh, I think going forward, we'll continue to to improve the plan, and and if we get through strategic planning, and one of the goals is communication that comes out of there, uh, as a as a district goal, um, having some type of measurable with that, and I I think the community ed, um, director will help with that, and and our administrative team as well.
Um, just out of curiosity, do we have a set of branding standards that we abide by? Like, you talked about having, um, more like a uniform, like a uniform, I guess, advertisement of our school with like the bulldogs and whatnot. I just know that that's something we do in robotics, and it it proves to work pretty well.
Yeah, uh, well, we just have, so some of the things that are in here are, uh, emails are gonna all look the same from coming out of the district, uh, logo usage, um, this, the colors, um, are all specific, and then the fonts and and logo and things like that, so we don't have uh, plan like that, but this communication plan will kind of meet some of those needs for the branding.
With that, I'll move to accept three F.
Okay, been moved?
No, second.
Seconded by Connie. So one other thing that that I want to say is that, as with everything, understand that this is the first generation of this communication plan, and we'll continue to look through, you know, look for further improvements. Um, one of the pieces, and the superintendent and I had a meeting just before, um, earlier today, before the, actually before curriculum committee, um, but in including in that maybe things like the board communication, uh, the ability of board members and and being able to respond to emails and that kind of stuff, and how that's going to happen, so that we're protected against breaking any open meeting laws, but also have more transparent communication and 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 information exchange between us and the and the community. And I I stress that it is always open to communication, you know, to the board members. That's why our information is posted on the on the school website to be able to communicate with us. But much of the communication will likely go back through the superintendent, the administration, the director level so that we aren't in violation of any of the statutes. Okay, does that make sense to everybody? Any questions on that? Okay. Any other comments on the communication plan? They've been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I just got the blue screen it down.
Yes.
Oh, we're on to guess, item four is a is a yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the gift.
Second.
Seconded by Aaron.
It it's absolutely incredible what transpired with the donations for for robotics. It was incredible in itself that robotics got to go was achieved worlds in itself, but actually to be able to go and represent Becker Schools on a world stage is is amazing. So hats off to the robotics team and our our donors for being able to make that happen.
Yeah, I'm kind of adding on to that. It really was a miracle that we rounded up as much money as we did in time. A lot of we're really grateful for our sponsors and as somebody who went to the competition, one of the best experiences of my life. So thank you to everyone who helped with that.
And there will, there are some carryover because they're done, but they're not even all on this month. I don't know if all the donations and get in on time or whatever, but some pledges that I am aware of aren't aren't even in there yet. So they'll be more or it's even greater than what you see this month. It's it's incredible and I think I put that in my notes as well. That's yeah, it's really remarkable. I was wondering, I was like, why is my computer over here?
All in favor of the motion to receive the gifts, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right, item five is the closing of school board vacancy. And so again, the process will be that the school board members would make a nomination.
Make a nomination that that then would have to be seconded so for any of the the eight candidates that that were screened at the at the last special board meeting. And so with that, I'll off open the floor to nominations.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question. Is it within our proxy to take a preliminary vote just to see where we could maybe in the very first vote without nominations be down to four in itself? I I don't know, being that our poll our resolution says not, I mean, I'm fine either way. I just was curious.
I'm not quite sure what you're getting towards, but again, if there was only four people of the eight nominated, then that would take us down to those four would be open for the ballot.
Right, I'm just curious if, what if there, what if somebody wanted potentially based on the two people, we end up with five versus four on a, if if that that's my, do we want to narrow it down to four right away or see if there's? Again, I'm just asking of the board if that's, if if that's within the proxy, if we even want to do it or we just need, we pick one ourselves and?
And this is at our at our discretion to talk about that. I mean, Robert's rules kind of gives us a little bit of guidance of nominating and seconding, but doesn't tell us that we have to narrow it down to by anything other than the, you know, again, anybody that's not nominated would not be eligible. So.
So a preliminary vote would just kind of be the same thing, we just take the pressure off the nominations. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, what, I mean, i- if we put it at one a piece, but I really felt strongly about two. That I guess that that's my question, is that permissible? Or are we are we sticking to one of these? Because my whoever starts, I guess, there there may be a consensus on that person. So we may get down to four or whatever, less than eight based on nominations, if that makes sense.
So it's a really sticky spot because we all nominated to.
I mean, we could.
For interviews.
Right.
And now if we all come out and just nominate one, now we're still at the board. I I think I see your point as far as the preliminary vote. I had suggested that we vote for three right off the bat and see if there's two that arise from that. If you vote for three, you obviously have to vote for somebody other than the two you put forward.
Right.
That would bring up another vote, so.
I'm I'm fine with that, too. I think that kind of achieves the same, the same thing.
Okay.
I'm okay with whatever. I mean, that was just my thinking is if we vote for three, then even if we just put down our two, there's obviously another third vote coming out of us.
Yeah. So we'll each vote for three.
Each vote for three. Okay.
So this is vote one.
Well, and again, we need to have nominations, so you know, the board members should nominate those that they.
I think based on what we were talking, we're going to nominate all eight to see where where it goes.
Okay, so the the move is to nominate all eight that were considered. Is there a second to that?
And see where it goes.
Yeah, I'll I'll second, if that's the motion, I'll I'll second that motion.
So so it's been moved and seconded that all eight people that were interviewed would be nominated for the ballot. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So all eight are nominated and we will vote for three. So you can take your first ballot, your first vote.
So add a number three to your ballot.
Yep.
Add a number three and at the top, right, vote number one. I would assume everybody has the names.
Around the agenda for last week.
Yeah.
Minutes.
So before we read those, if it comes to a tie, we're just moving the three or four that are tied forward to go to the second round. Is that my assumption, am I assuming right?
Correct. Okay, and we did talk to MSBA about the way to do this and read it so that it's that it's publicly known. They advised us to read, and that's why the names were on the ballot, our names were on the ballot, is to read who voted and then the three people that they voted for. Okay, so the first ballot is Mark Swanson. The votes are for Gwen Anderson, Troy Burning and Sonia Cox. Aaron's vote is for Troy Burning, Pete Weissman and Renee Regal. Connie's vote is for Matt Kushel, Ryan Hubbard and Renee Regal, right? And Ryan's votes are for Pete Weissman, Troy Burning and Ryan Hubbard. Three for Troy.
Yeah. Two for two for Renee and two for? What do you have?
Ryan.
Ryan.
Ryan, yeah, and two for Pete. And two for Pete, yeah.
Clark.
Okay, and so Troy Burning is elected to one of the positions. He received three votes, which will be a majority. And so the second ballot will only include the names of right, make sure I get this, Pete Weissman.
Renee.
Renee Regal.
Ryan.
And Ryan Hubbard. I would say because there's only one position remaining, just vote for two. Okay, and put two on the top. First vote from Mark Swanson is for Pete Weissman and Renee Regal. Also, Aaron Jurick votes for Renee and Pete. Ryan votes for Pete and Ryan Hubbard. And Connie votes for Pete and Ryan Hubbard and Pete Weissman is elected to the second position. And so I will move the resolution filling the school board vacancies by appointment. And we the only change to from what's in the in the board book is the names are added in the fourth paragraph of Troy Burning and Pete Weissman.
One second.
Okay, any other discussion on the resolution? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Can I just speak to that real quick?
Yep.
I I just want to thank everybody who threw their names in. And who the eighth who came and presented last week. It's it's, it was a very difficult choice. And when we went through the twenty seven names, it was it's pretty amazing to think that there are that many people who want to sit in this spot and and go through some of the things that that we deal with. So I just want to personally thank everybody who who put their name out and put themselves in the process to go through this. It's humbling to see that many people that were willing to step up and and help out. So thank you all for doing that.
And I'll just piggyback off of that and remember that these are short term positions. So if you are sincere enough that you want to participate in this, remember that we've got elections coming in November as well.
And again, those elections will be for two, two more, two years seats and three, four year seats.
Yes.
And you know, that'll be voted on in the in the November election. And I know I I just want to add to that because I mean, for sure, having the amount of talent and the the time that was spent in putting together the the presentations, answering questions and just even putting your name in in the hat with the twenty seven people. It's, it is great to see that this community continues to understand the importance of serving on a on the school board. And and thanks to all of you that put your name in and the the two people that we just appointed. Again, the process is that there's a thirty day waiting period. And that allows for some of the pieces on statute. If there are any questions and and a couple of questions came up during the special meeting that we had about a petition and that kind of stuff, all of that information can be gleaned by contacting the county auditor's office. They are the election authority that's within our area that understands the number of people voted and all that kind of stuff. And so even we would, they actually are the independent party that would review any petition according to statute. And while we're we're a part of that as well, they act as the independent review and auditing of that. Again, that's the county auditor's office. Any questions on that? Any other comments? Thank you to everybody. We're up to item six, which is the second reading of the two policies listed.
Move to accept.
We moved the sec by Ryan. Seconded by Connie. Any other discussions on those second readings? The only thing that I'll say again, a- as we work towards having this policy committee and looking at all these things, even these ones that we're just doing now have to be reviewed for additional improvements. Okay, and so as we move forward and understanding all of these next steps for our district, including, you know, if we need to create additional things like inclusion councils or those types of things, should should have the appropriate policies. Okay. With that, all in favor of the motion to adopt these policies, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item seven is the revised twenty one, twenty two budget. Kevin?
Okay, we'll see if Jason can get it up on the screen. First one that we're going to be looking at is the revised budget that we're currently in for the current school year, twenty one, twenty two. It's there for a second. There you go. So so this form, what how it works is so the top section is the general fund and the very first line is our total general fund budget where we're where we started the current year. So last July first, twenty twenty one, then it adds in the revenues, subtracts out the expenditures, adds in some other financing sources, comes to a variance. So that's really the revenues over the expenditures. And then that gets added to the beginning fund balance, gets us to a projected fund balance. So across the top, first line, that's really the total general fund. Then from that gets subtracted out certain reserves that the state requires us to separate out. The two largest ones are operating capital. Those are for items like equipment, some repairs, those types of things, things that last longer than a year. The second one is the long term facilities maintenance. That's our repairs on parking lots, our mechanical systems, roof repairs, certain like if lighting goes out, power goes out, it's those things. So it's maintenance. And you'll see in June, we'll come back with a tenure plan that the board will approve in June for for that. But as you can see, both of those are going up slightly. They're pretty much a a break even, but they are going up slightly. One from thirty seven thousand to seventy six thousand for the operating capital. The long term facilities maintenance from twenty thousand to sixty seven thousand. Then the next two sections are assigned fund balances and non spendable fund balances. The non spendable are really any prepaid and inventory that we have. The non-spendable are really any prepaid and inventory that we have. So we have to set that aside because it really is an already expenditure that's done at the beginning of the year. And then we don't know what this next year's going to be, so we just make it the same amount. The assigned fund balances are really, there's some assigned balances within the buildings. Each, each of the buildings have certain things that they're doing within their buildings that get assigned to those specific items. One of them, for example, is playground fund in the primary and intermediate. So when they get donations, they go into there, it gets saved up till they have enough. They may put in a new piece of equipment in the playgrounds. Then the, the bottom line there, so we, we subtract all those from that first line, and we come down to our unassigned fund balance. And as you can see, we do go up approximately 200,000. This is one of those communication things that is a percentage at the, at the end that we're projecting at the end of the year of 3,260, which is a 9.7%. You can see that way over on the right there. Which does meet the board's goal of the 8% unassigned fund balance. The food service is probably the one that had the largest change. And that's mainly because when we did the budget last May approval, they only had the meals going through June 30th. And then in June, they, the federal government extended that all the way through August 30th for the summer meals. So that was our main increase in there. But as you can see, we are going up 147,000 in that fund. The, the state does recommend that the fund balance only is approximately three months' worth of expenditures. That's around 500,000. So we will be over that at the end of this year. But as you'll see, the 2223 budget for next year, we do have plans on spending that down to around that 500,000. Community Service Fund, not real big changes there. There are some smaller drops in the fund balance. You'll see a 12,175 in the reserve for community ed. The reserve for ECFE is a $13,000 decrease. And then the reserve for school readiness is 20,000. And then the new one that, that came in, obviously, is the Building Construction Fund because of the referendum this last fall passed and issuing those bonds in February. So obviously, last May, when you approved this original budget, there was nothing there. But the referendum passed, we issued the bonds, 44,396. We have an estimated amount that we're spending through June. Probably won't hit that much this year yet, but... And just using the ICS's estimated payout schedules that they gave us. But at the, you'll see next year, when we go through the next year, that, that, that fund balance will start going down also as we start building the different items within the referendum. Then the last fund is the Debt Service Fund. That's our fund that, that, you know, collects the property taxes to repay the principal and interest on the bonds issued. The, the, the law is that we have to levy 105% of whatever our principal and interest is. So that fund balance usually will increase because we don't have a 5% delinquency rate. That's why the statute says 105%, but we don't have a 5% delinquency rate. So we're always going to have more revenue than we will expenditures in this fund.
And that, and that plays out year over year. If I remember right, some of the conversations we've had is, is if it gets too much, we don't let, we true ourselves up in a future year where we don't levy as much.
So, so what'll happen when, when I bring the, the, the next levy, levy to you in September, the preliminary, they'll, the state will have a calculation if that gets too large. It lowers, so it still calculates the 105%, but then they call, they'll have an adjustment in there to lower that down to their, what they, we want to call it maximum amount that we should have. There's a calculation they go through. So it would lower the taxes in the end. Still, because the statute's there for the 105%, we still have to show that, but then there's the adjustment that brings those taxes down. Because our fund balances, if it grows. Any other questions on the revised for the current year 2122?
That 9.7 odd percent is really just a month's worth of expenditure, a little bit more than a month.
Yeah, a little bit more than a month. That's about, whatever it'd be, be, you know, 100% divided by 12. So 8% is about a month, right around 8%. Which is still minimal.
Discussion, any other discussions or questions?
Thank you, Kevin, for walking through that so thoroughly there, explaining it.
Yep, yep, you're welcome. If you ever have questions, feel free to ask. It's what I'm here for.
Because it's so easy to understand.
Yeah.
I don't know how you do it all on stage, yeah.
We won't talk about the Excel file he uses to get into that.
Well, and all the formulas, I understand, you know, all of these pieces come together in finance and key pieces to understand. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, then, then the next one is really for next school year, fiscal year 2223. It's the same spreadsheet, just different year. But what you'll have in that first column is really the projected fund balance from the previous sheet, the, the projected ending. You know, will we be right on that? No, I mean, if I could do that, I'd be a sous-sayer somewhere, predicting lots of things, but, you know, you, you, you have your things and, and you do your projections and you, you go with them, and that's what they are. So, so that first column is really the projected from the, the end of this year. Then we have our revenues for the next year, expenditures for next year, and then the variances, which is really the revenues over or under the expenditures. And then the projected that we would be at, at June 30th, 2023, which is, you know, a year and two months away from now. Again, it's the same setup, that front, first line is the general fund in total. And then you have the operating capital, long-term facilities maintenance. As you can see, those, they're pretty much a wash, not a large increase. The assigned fund balances, again, and the non-spendable, they all get subtracted from that first line of the total to get to the unassigned fund balance, which again is, it's, is the important one for the board policy that we're looking at the 8% minimum. You see there, it's pretty much a wash, $11,000 increase. And again, it, it won't end up being that. I, you know, I, I put estimates in, and that's what you gotta use, but that's what we come to. So, and, and the general fund unassigned, we actually go down a little bit from that 9.7% we were the year before to 9.6, because it's always based on the expenditure call. You know, it's, it's whatever that ending projected fund balance is based on the 34,69,794. So because that, that base, that denominator, that you're dividing it by changes, then that percentage may change. Here, you'll see the Food Service Fund, where I was telling you, you know, we do have plans to try to spend that down so that we end up right around that 500,000, which is three months' worth of our expenditures in the Food Service Fund. The, the big change in the Food Service Fund is that USDA, the Department of Agriculture, is ending the, the free meals at the end of this school year. And it's, it originally, it was thought that it was going to go through June of this school year, but the USDA clarified that and said, no, it's the last day of school that the free lunches are, are, are going to end. So next school year, we'll start up with, as it is now, who knows politically what might change, the state does have some legislation, they might continue it. But as of now, it, it's ending as of next school year, so.
Jeremy, does that mean we're going to be chasing down free food supplies application again?
If it's, I mean, it's not free, so we gotta go back to what we had previous to COVID, is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Yes, sir, I know.
We'll try to get as many as we can. And it did go down when the free meals came in. We went from about 18% to about 14%. So 4% of the people either didn't fill it out, and I'm thinking didn't fill it out, because during COVID, you know, a lot of people went unemployed. Actually, their incomes went down, you would think if they actually filled them out, they would, we would have more people qualify. Okay? And, and we have plans to send out communications about, you know, that. Now, as soon as...
Well, and that not only affects, you know, funding of the food, but it affects a bunch of other things in the formula.
Exactly, the free and reduced count is used for many different things. One of them's compensatory, the other one is the federal funding, the normal federal funding that we get Title I and Title II and Special Ed.
Which also really affected our ester funding.
Yes, it did.
All of those types, thank you.
As Jeremy has very eloquently communicated that many times. The Community Service Fund, those, that, those do have some decreases in them. Do plan on sitting down with the director and going through these so that if there has to be fee increases, that we would maybe try to get them incorporated before next year. And then the Building Construction Fund, there you'll see, you know, we, we bring the money in from last year, the 41 million. We do get to earn some interest on those funds because, you know, we don't spend it all right now. So we actually invest those funds until we're going to spend them out. So that's why you see the revenue in there. And that's probably even a little low now that the interest rates are going up, but that's a good thing, I mean, the interest rates go up. There is a, a thing called arbitrage, though. We, we can't earn more money on the investments than what we're paying for interest on the bonds. That's what they call arbitrage. So if we actually, if the rates would go, you know, way above our, we issued them at, what, 3.2%, I think? But if the, if the interest rates would actually go up higher than that, that we could earn, then we actually have to pay that back to the IRS. That's just, that's arbitrage loss. So, but, and, and the estimate of the expenditures, again, are off of the, kind of the, the construction schedule from ICS, of what they hope that we can get done in next fiscal year. And so by the end of next year, again, we'll still have about half of those funds available yet at the end of the year. And in the Debt Service Fund, again, that's at 105% of what the bonds, principal, and interest are and what we have as revenues, 105%, and the expenditure is the actual amount, we, we know what those are. Any questions on next year's budget?
Do you anticipate that 800,000 debt service, are we creeping up to the point where we're going to have an adjustment?
Yeah, they'll probably have an adjustment on that. And that'll come in this, this coming levy. But again, remember that the levy that you're going to approve this fall will actually be for the 2324 school year. So it's kind of always a little bit of a lag time because of the way the revenues are recognized, which year they're...
Other questions and concerns? I do. So, I mean, historically, community ed, we've, we've put money into that fund from...
The last two years we have.
The last two years we've put in, and...
Well, we go back to the beginning when we came on 12 years ago.
It was negative, it was actually a negative fund. And I, I know it's, it's not good news for the community that they might have to pay more for that community ed piece, but I think it's, it's not fiscally responsible to continue to spend that down.
We actually, I actually asked that at our meeting about the community ed. Is it time, I know that we just did a fee restructure, revisited fees going into, I believe, this school year. Is it, do we have to reevaluate it again, given where his proposed budget is at? That did come up in the finance committee meeting.
How often do we set the community ed fees?
Well, the fees are set usually once a year. It's in July, I think, it's usually the July board meeting.
Yeah, we, we bring them forward at that time. I, I, I'm still hesitant to do anything right now because of the COVID, it's still affecting those numbers, especially the last couple of years. I think we've got it, it may be on the right track, we just don't know. I'd be hesitant, again, to, to increase those fees and then also have a huge surplus in that account, because you're not supposed to.
It's probably in a discussion during next year, though. I mean, you know, I mean, during next year, I think they have to look, just, we can give them a mid-year, where you're at, how you're doing type of thing. See if they're making it, and if they're not, at least then they can start that discussion.
I mean, ideally, we'd want that run at zero, zero balance.
Yeah.
Money in, there's money out.
We are looking at some grant opportunities as well for community ed type of things, so, so we're trying that, but sometimes our, our numbers don't work as well as, like, that free reduce comes, sometimes comes into play for those types of grants and things, but we're trying to get, get some of that, too, to...
And one thing is, that is in that, in the Community Service Fund, you know, we do, we do charge them for the use of the space that they have currently. Now, we haven't the last two years because of the COVID. We actually had to transfer the money in. But remember, when they're in their own building, that program that'll be in that building by themselves will be the community ed. They'll have their own meter, they'll have their own water and sewer charges. I mean, there won't even be an estimate, we'll know what it costs to be in that building. You know?
And I think we have a little bit more of a cushion with the ECFE and school readiness, but the community ed has been a continual thing with Aaron and I, like I said, have seen recurring. So just, just watch that, okay. Take a motion to approve the proposed budget?
I'll move to accept.
Ryan?
A second.
Second by Aaron. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item nine is strategic planning.
Just these dates, or dates I sent out of one of my updates, looking at these, I, I just wanted everyone to be aware of these dates. We may look at switching that first listening session date so we can get more information out, because those will involve people throughout the district and community. But we want to kind of get started on this fairly soon. At our Sherbrooke Northern Rights Specialty Co-op Meeting, we talked about strategic planning, but we also talked, Big Lake has started this process as well, two weeks, this week, last week?
This last week they started.
Yeah, just recently, and so... Yeah, and so I'm, I'm glad they're doing it first in a neighboring district, and I communicate with Superintendent Troopinbach quite a bit, and so we, you know, we can learn from some of their things that happened as well. But any questions on these dates, I guess, there's no need for a vote or anything like that, but... Need for a vote or anything like that, but.
So the process, when it talks about five sessions during the day and early evening. Are those targeted groups, like students, staff, that kind of stuff, is it targeted for specific groups?
Yep, but there also is opportunities for others, if the time works better for them to, to participate, but they'll, they'll, uh. Try to do like the staff ones during the school day and then things like that, the internal audiences and then the, um, external side of it af- after school. But if, um, my understanding was if, if there's a time that works better for somebody, they can still get put into that. That pool, I guess, or that group, uh, from that. And then the.
And these are open to school board members as well?
Yes, yep, and then the, uh, the, starting on June first, um. That'd be a narrower set of people, um, that, that would be participating in that. So once we identify people from the listening sessions, from the surveys, we would, we would have a smaller group of forty to fifty people. Be on that, hopefully, ideally forty to fifty.
And these sessions are in-person, remote, combination?
Combination, yep, so, uh, one of the questions I do need to check on, and I just thought of, um, just later today was, um. Since the board is gonna be there, they're all available virtually, but I have to check now if the board has to be here. At least the, uh, forum of the board has to be here, uh, and be open to the public. Or if they can, if you guys can all do it from your house or wherever it is, and we'll have six board members at that time. Um, we're really close to that time, so. I'm, I'm gonna do some checking on that and I'll, I'll update the board on that. But it will be public via virtually, um, so anyone can see that, we'll post it, um, because we'll have a majority of the board.
So these dates, it is a board required.
Yes.
June first will not be available.
Those are the right dates. Oh yeah, because we were on Tuesdays, weren't we, and then we switched it to Wednesdays, yeah. Okay.
So, just, just let, just like, you know, I got an away baseball game, so.
Yeah, knowing most of the board is here, and again.
We moved into Wednesdays to avoid your baseball schedule.
Well, a- at this time, it, it.
No rain, if it rains, we're good.
If, if it rains, we're good. I s- I scheduled on the twentieth and for away games, I g- I had certain days I could pick and.
I, I think one of the key, I mean, because. The first sessions are really listening sessions, and it's important to be there to listen. But there isn't any action, summary, kind of moving forward until that last session that's on this currently scheduled for the fourteenth of July. And so this is, that's where we start, you know, formulating the, the, the goals and objectives. And remember, that is a board policy that gets adopted, um, as, for those goals and objectives. And so, again, it's important to, to be there and listen, and, and again, I, they'll be recorded, so you can come back and listen to them. Um, but, um, it's important to be there to listen so that we understand. You know, that input or where that came from as we move through the goal setting process, right? Okay, any other questions on strategic planning? And those will be publicized and, and links available to the appropriate input pieces. Okay, any other items?
Negotiations, I forgot during committees, um, two eighty-four. Yep, so we did a, sent out a boot up poll to the, uh, committee members for negotiations with two eighty-four. I just, I just left it in my head just now, I remember that, so.
Haven't had, haven't had a chance to look at.
Yeah, but we'll start those in the next, within the next month or so, I guess, so the next board meeting, there may be an update with that.
Okay, any other ends? We are adjourned.